I'm gonna call to order the regular meeting of the Abboton School Committee on Tuesday, November 26, 2019, here at the Middle High School Library. This is being recorded for everybody for Abboton CAM. If you could please rise for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First off, we have hearing of visitors. Anybody like to talk on anything on the agenda? Alright, Billy, I'm gonna welcome you to the podium, please.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. All you board members, because you were volunteers just like me. I'm here to announce, I've been a volunteer with Abboton CAM for 25 years. It's been a hard decision, but I'm tired. So this evening, I'm gonna announce that my retirement from Abboton CAM. It's been fun. It's been a long, long road, but enjoyable road. You know, I've met the best of people in this town, the best of people from other towns. I'm a person that never wore green tinted glasses when I filmed my stuff. I would always focus on the athlete, whether it was a home person or an away person. Unfortunately, sometimes they had my commentating, which is a cross between Bob Walz and I'm a father. You get what you get, you can always turn on the audio. You get what you get. I've always said, a bad video is still better than no video. So again, I'm here to announce my retirement. We have people like Aaron here, he's been an intern with Abboton CAM. There's a whole bunch of interns that have been well-trained, motivated. So I know I'm leaving right now in good hands with these interns. I am gonna ask that people in town, it's your studio, so you can volunteer. You know, you have, you have a child that does karate, you know? Do, show a picture of that, a video of that. You wanna go fishing with your son. Your child has a school project and you wanna film it. You want everybody else to see how you did it and everything. I would like to see anywhere from a first grader all the way through high school and beyond, use the studio. Obviously, first grader through, let's say, junior high would have parental supervision. But it's here for you. And I just, I would like to see people volunteer. Abboton CAM has been wonderful to see. Of course, my own biggest critic, I've actually had a couple of football games this year that I was horrified, it just wasn't good enough. But the great alarm football game, I was, I was on it. So anyways, but again, regrettably, it's time for me to retire. I do have some commitments. Before I made the decision, I told the Ultimate Frisbee that I would do their season. And this season, wherever the game is, I'm going. So get all the games that I can get in, as long as it's not raining. And I did make a commitment to the spring soccer, which is not a school affiliated thing, but it still involves Abboton High School players. So, and I did make a 10-year commitment to Jack Bailey to do the parade, so. But with that, again, it's time. It's been a really hard decision for me to make, but I just, I've made a lot of sacrifices and it's just, I'm tired and I just need to get some stuff done. But I am proud of my 25-year service, so I want to thank the town for allowing me into their power. So, that's it, thank you.
Billy, thank you. Thank you very much for all the time you've given, all the time at our meetings, all the games, as you mentioned, everything going on, school events downstairs, Honor Society, everything else. I'm gonna open it up.
I'd like to say thank you too for all your years of volunteering. I know my kids play sports and I have the most incredible CDs that you've dropped at my house for me even, of the games that they've played. And I just love watching them and I cherish all that that you've done over the years.
That was one of the reasons why I kept doing it, because I have an old trunk full of my soccer stuff, of course, the VHS tapes. But I have, I have an old TV that works and that works every once in a while. We'll put it in and there's certain games that we have that we know how it turned out, okay? But the sound, it's like, you forget who won, who lost, how they did, and it's like, you know, watch it all over again. Another reason why I kept on doing this, I want, I want everybody in town, all these athletes, to be able to show their kids, they really were good, you know?
Yes. We have proof now, but thank you for everything, I appreciate it.
And you're a great guy, full of a bag of tricks, with cough drops behind the scenes and tissues. You've always taken good care of us here, besides the video that you made.
Well, that's, you know, I was a Marine, but that's, that's the Coast Guard and the Boy Scout motto, separate paratus, always prepared. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Billy, I feel the same way. You've always been awesome and you've been one of my favorites from the start.
Thank you.
So, thank you for all you've done and we'll definitely see you around.
But again, you're all volunteers too, and I wanna thank Pete and Shaffer. The town is blessed to have you. It's been a pleasure working with you, no matter what. It's been, it's been great. And you have mentored me in different things and I appreciate that and I have learned and I have gotten better, so, thank you.
No, I, you know, I kinda got a chill when you said that, thank you. That's not necessary. I appreciate personally the years and the time and the hours upon hours upon hours that you've put in for this school system, providing and communicating to people the beauty and the richness of what goes on with kids. And I said to you before, and the biggest impact of all, I think, is on those families that we serve, that get to see their children together on TV, whether they can't make it to something or they wanna see it again, because those are special times in the life of a family. And you helped us provide that connection to all those families that we serve, so I thank you for that.
Thank you. Those are special times. And one of my favorites is Beaverbrook, going in there and I would take, I would take the monitor and turn it around so that, that the students there, the little students, could see themselves and they're just all excited about seeing themselves. I had more fun than they did, I think.
I bet.
And what you said, Chris, you know, all that stuff, the, doing the school committee meetings, though, that was court ordered, so.
Thanks, Billy, thank you for everything, I appreciate it, we all appreciate it.
Yeah, we love you, Billy.
Thank you very much, everybody. Good day.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak?
Joseph Shady, Strywyman Road, Abboton. As a former selectman, I want to thank Billy for all he has done for the town. He's one of those people who helps make this a special place to live, this is volunteering. Ironically, he lives about five houses away from a similar person, Nancy Reeves, does the same.
Yeah.
And has done the same for many, many years. And we deserved him and he's such an example for all of us to care for. I've known Billy since when I was walking to the North School and I walked past his house and he was about three or four years old out in the front lawn. He's been a great guy all those years.
Great.
So thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else looking to speak before we start? Moving on, we're gonna have the approval of minutes from our regular meeting. Our regular October meeting is first on the agenda. After reviewing if, I'll be looking for the committee to provide a motion.
Motion.
Anybody second?
I'm second.
All in favor of approval? Aye. Excellent. The next set is from our executive session on the same night, October 22nd. If you just take a look at it, it should be quick.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Except principals' report. Dr. Sullivan, is it gonna be you or Karen?
I'll start.
Karen, before you start, are you doing all three?
I am.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to approve them individually, okay?
So I'm, do I start them?
Yeah, you can just start with the, um...
So basically, the first trip is presented by Carol Howell and it is in February of 2021 to Lisbon, Seville and Madrid. And I don't know, you guys have your judges?
Yes, we do, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I guess I can just answer questions that you might have, or some of the questions might be raised on all three trips.
Is there a, oh, number of students going, never mind.
Yeah, we like to aim to fill the trip so that Abboton can travel as, so it's own.
Yeah, okay. Let me ask the committee, do you want to wait until we're done and do each one individually at that point, or do you wanna approve them as we go?
I was gonna say, do they run together?
At the end? We can't approve all at once. We can't approve all three at one time, but we can do them all at the end if we want. Is there any questions related to all of them?
We'll just explain everything and then we'll vote.
Yeah, let's do that then, Karen, we'll vote each one at the end, okay? In cases...
So that's for April. And then Steve Shannon, along with Michael and Shaw Coria, have proposed a music and art trip in Central Europe. And I believe that their intention is to have this replace their traditional music and art trip and open it up to the music and art students, with the intention being that should they not fill it completely, that they would take anybody that might be interested in this sort of itinerary. And then Sue Peck would like to lead a trip also in April at the same time to Iceland. So this is our first repeat trip, because I did a trip to Iceland a while ago, so I guess we're running out of...
Running out of Scandinavian country. Karen, I have one question, do you know, is the music and art, what grades it involves?
They're all juniors and seniors.
Okay, alright, thank you.
And when you said it replaces the old trip, is that the Washington DC trip that you're talking about?
I believe so.
Okay.
So that was my, I, for those that don't know, I, this is my first time stepping foot out of high school in 10 weeks. I have a new replacement, so I've been out. And so I've been communicating with station through email and a lot of it has been like, yes, this is what I want, but whatever you really, whatever you think will work, this will, da-da-da. So it's my impression, Dr. Sullivan, correct me if I'm wrong, that this is to replace for one year at least, just to see how it goes. And we just typically have only offered international trips to juniors and seniors.
Okay.
So I have a question. So the trip, the art and music trip, that's gonna be just offered to art and music students?
They're gonna get first dibs at it, yes. And then should they not fill it? I mean, they have a huge grade kids that come to that. And I wouldn't imagine that we haven't spoken to a bunch of them to gauge interest. And so I have a feeling they'll probably fill up with them. But every time we offer trips, when kids fill out applications to go, they check off their first choice destination and then there's a section that says, if I'm not, if I don't get into the trip because it filled up too quickly and we had to go to lottery, then I would have a second choice or third choice. So other kids could put that as their second or third choice. And if it's not full, then they would have the ability to go back.
Do you have any idea of what they might choose for fundraiser?
We always do a Yankee handle fundraiser.
Okay.
So typically, this year was the first year that our numbers haven't been as high as they were in the past. But we've been able to generate close to $2,000 per trip when the kids like really get up and get going. And we use that money, we collect it as a whole and they don't get to keep their own individual one, they sold it, all goes together. We arrange a bus to and from where we can, and then we pay for incidentals along the way. Like in Iceland, we took them horseback riding. In Japan, we took them to a digital art museum and paid for the train to get there and then we still had money, so when we came home, we were able to refund them a little bit of their money. So we don't keep it, you know? And then last year, the Japan travels were really, they were gone without a fundraiser. So they proposed to do a Hillary's chocolate fundraiser and in that case, they kept their own money, they paid for it. So we're not opposed to, I would definitely limit it to sell my box, come back and get another.
Right.
Because they were leaving me notes going, "Two, two more boxes." But yes, so that worked out really well and they made, you know, some people made a lot of money off that, some people sold one box, but that would be something that we could do in the spring if they're interested. But we usually do Yankee handle in the fall.
Okay.
In the first trip that I did with Miss Lucco, we did a million fundraisers. We did yard sales, we did car washes, we did this. And the kids basically said to us, "You're asking me to take a Saturday off of work where I could have made $200 to get my share of this fundraiser, which was like $20 bucks to have it work."
Right, right.
And so for the amount of money that went into it, but there's really nothing to Yankee handle selling, so it's the easiest, most easy fundraiser.
Yeah, okay. That works. Any other questions? I just wanna say thank you for coming as early as you are.
Oh.
So that's appreciated. Alright, so then I will be looking for a motion, first, to approve the international field trip to Lisbon, Seville and Madrid in February of 2021.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second, or do you take one of them? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just have one other question. When do you get more definitive dates? Because I know it just says like April or February.
It's the vacation week, it's just a question of typically, really like a Thursday before I make it. But Iceland trip, when I did it last time, it's only a six-day one, so it fits completely within the contract of vacation. If it's nine days, then there's a chance.
Is it based on flights, is that how it's based on? Is it based on flights, like when you get the flights?
EF says pick your dates. So we give them a Saturday, a Saturday, because ideally we don't wanna miss school. And then they tell us that we have to be okay with two, three days before or after those days. So yes, I'm sure it's based on their flights. For sure.
Next, I'll be looking for a motion for the field trip to Central Europe, Czech Republic, Austria and Italy in April of 2021.
Can I ask a question about this one?
Yeah, yeah.
The nine days, when it says that you'd be gone for, the kids would be gone for nine days. So what about, I know absences work so differently in high school.
It's excused field trip.
It's excused, okay, okay. That was it, thank you.
I'm gonna answer with a vote.
I'll make a motion to approve this one.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And lastly, the field trip in April of 2021 to Iceland, same thing, looking for a motion from the committee to approve or anything else? I'll make, I'll make the motion.
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Deezie.
Thank you for coming tonight. I feel really better.
Yeah, if I would've known, you could've sat down.
Right, I know.
As Dr. Sullivan said, he must be going crazy, so I said, "I've never looked forward to going to school." On that note, though, I am gonna...
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, guys.
Rest up.
Next up, elementary principals, Mr. Hawes and Ms. Thompson, for standards-based report cards.
Yeah, you may have to forgive us for going...
Don't worry about it. Jonathan, we all have a copy.
Great, alright, just wanna make sure everyone isn't making this a mess.
I know that's bugging both of you, incredibly, that your PowerPoint isn't working, so just wanna acknowledge that, don't worry about it.
And it is online, anybody can see it on, it's part of our agenda that's online if anybody wanted to see it, so.
Okay, so hi, guys. We wanted to come this evening to sort of update you on what we've sort of undertaken so far with regard to an elementary standards-based report card transition. This transition is, we believe, long overdue at the elementary level. I think as you'll see a little bit later into the presentation, that what we're currently asking of our teachers to report out on does not necessarily match the updates to the curriculum frameworks, so it's time that we make sure our reporting aligns. For those unfamiliar with what a standards-based report card would look like versus a traditional report card, instead of solely having As, Bs, Cs or Bs, our standards-based report cards would essentially give you, relative to an individual standard, an update about where that student's progress was at the reporting time. So instead of an overall grade in English or an overall grade in mathematics, your students would receive a rating relative to really what are the power standards within that curriculum concept. And they would either be meeting the standard at that time, they would be progressing towards the standard at that time. So instead of just a raw A, B, C, D grade, they would be getting an update relative to those standards. The teachers would be tracking student progress over the course of a reporting period relative to those standards. It would not represent solely an average of the student's work over the course of the trimester. They would be taking frequent opportunities to sort of update where those students are relative to those standards.
In a standards-based report card, for standards-based grading, the focus is on the end-of-year learning objectives, where currently, we, at the elementary level, particularly at Beaverbrook, we're looking at skills as opposed to the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. So we chose focused standards, working with teachers for each grade level, and we will be looking at that student growth over time. And as Jonathan said, we'll be looking at that student growth at that point in time when it's time to report out on student progress. And teachers will be able to look at specific details of what that student knows and is able to do at the end of that trimester or term. And it's very clear what that student knows and is able to do based on the standards as opposed to maybe an overall overarching concepts of this comprehension.
So here's what we've done so far. We buy grade level, set out a task to our grade level reps, to meet with grade levels, identify the real important chunks. I mean, there are so many standards within each of the core curricular areas that we couldn't represent all of them in a standards-based report card. So we asked of each of our grade levels was to really represent what they felt the power standards were, the standards that were accurately represented with the broad scope of the year, the things that if there was a lot of overlap, we found a way to just represent with some verbiage instead of having the entire standard in there. So our grade level teams set out to do that. They came back with Julie and I and we have really sort of worked to make sure that the standards-based report card at the Beaverbrook School shows the progression towards the standards that are represented in grade three and four, making sure that some of our reporting areas use similar language, making sure that the teachers felt represented in the types of, you know, reporting that they were doing and making sure that it really aligned and made sense.
So on this slide, I say slide loosely, it's a ELA comparison, the current, showing the current report card and the proposed standards-based report card. In the current report card, we're merely reporting out on overarching concepts or skills like I had mentioned before. Comprehensives text uses neat, legible handwriting, reads independently. On the standards-based report card, we're looking at finite skills at a point in time. And we're reporting out on specific standards, which determines main idea of the text, knows and uses text features, and determines main idea of a text, which really allows the teacher to hone in on what that student knows and is able to do. And it gives parents a very informative report card. And the parents also will have a really good idea of what that student might need as far as support in those areas and what that student may be mastering at that time. So that was the ELA comparison. And here's our math comparison, showing our current report card, reporting out on things such as understands concepts. But when a parent receives a report card that says understands concepts, sometimes you might ask, what concepts do they understand? In the proposed standards-based report card, we're reporting out on solves and explains multi-step problems involving appropriate operations, solves problems involving measurement and conversion, and applying the area and perimeter formulas for rectangles in real world and mathematical problems. And as you can see, it's much more descriptive and specific than just those numbered facts and words accurately.
An additional piece that our teams took a look at, aside from the core curricular areas, is the section of the report card that often represents, it's been called everything from like work habits to behavior, et cetera. And again, the current report card really does not do justice to the way in which we're educating our kids now, specifically with these skills that support learning. So our teams took a look at the things that we want our kids to know and be able to do when it comes to being a learner, being a participant and a learner, making sure that we are taking a look at like the skills that they're executing each day. So these overarching skills, they take a kid just from how they're working in class cooperatively, making sure that they're adhering to school-wide expectations, the learning expectations of the classroom, their skills that are observable not only in the classroom but across a lot of our settings. And we're really hoping that over the course of the year, as each school works to develop their vision of a graduate, the things that we're expecting a fourth grade student to leave the Woodsdale School or a second grade student to leave the Beaverbrook School embodying these characteristics, these will also be represented in our skills that support learning section. So it would be an opportunity to really sort of bridge that expectation of what a closing first grader or a closing second grader is showing us with regard to work habits, cooperation with leaders, perseverance in problem solving, et cetera. So our proposed timeline, again, we've already been working within our grade levels for drafts. So we have currently drafts from K to 4 written. The next step in this process would be for us to sort of finalize each of those standards in each of those reporting areas, so going back to our grade level teams, making sure that it looks ironed out. And after that, we will submit it to X2. Aspen X2 is our student information system, it's currently where the report cards are generated from, teachers input their grades into Aspen. So Aspen's gonna help us build this and there will be a review process with that. We'll work with Rich Piekowski, our director of technology, we'll work with Sherri Fedorov, it's the director of curriculum construction assessment. There will be some edits that will be necessary, how much real estate we have on the actual report card may dictate some of the things that we choose to report out on. But after that, we hope, once we have a draft in hand, the next piece and the most important piece would be to work with the parents to have a true understanding of what the report card that you're editing soon looks like now is vastly different from what would be proposed and in your hands at this time next year. So aside from just the look of it, we really wanna make sure that our parents are understanding the change in standard-based grading, how our teachers are assessing, how it's not just a raw average, of really showing a progression of skills. And also some information about, it would be expected that earlier in the year, not every student would have mastered these standards. It would be totally appropriate at the beginning of the year for a student's ratings relative to these standards to be lower. And as we close the year, the progression shows them getting towards meeting that standard. That's a philosophical shift in grading and sort of a shift in how parents may be used to receiving a report card, opening up that envelope. So we'll do a ton of work with the parent community, we'll do a lot of work with our staff on how to, A, compile these grades and how to monitor the progress over the course of a trimester. The grade book is no longer just an average, it would really be trending towards a skill-based grade book. That training would also continue into the fall. We have plans to make sure that parents are informed as we open up with curriculum night, there would be a portion of our curriculum, curriculum night, that would again revisit some of the topics that we've talked about, making sure that they're understanding how we're... making sure that they're understanding how we're approaching our grading and making sure that our staff understands that well.
Thank you both. No, thank you both. I really appreciate it. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
I do. So is it a one K through four report card? Or is it a specific report card for each grade based on, because I feel like it was more general before and now you're like breaking it down a little more. Sorry, my voice. I feel like no voice.
Mine too. The report card is specific to each grade level. It represents the focus standards in the content areas for each grade level and specialist areas. So while it looks the same and the language is consistent from K through four because our teams did a lot of vertical alignment, each grade level is specific to that grade level.
And coming soon also to the middle grades, their own grade level, similar type formats. They are currently further, you guys are, I believe, tell me if I'm, you know, tell me where I, if I'm wrong here. You are already closer to this as it stands today than the middle school is in terms of the standards-based report card. So they have a larger gap to close in terms of getting there. So to do it right and to be diligent about this, it's going to, you'll see the middle school one coming soon.
When you say middle school, is that five to eight or fifth and sixth as part of elementary?
It is probably fifth and sixth because there's another challenge from seven to eight feeding into the high school model. But I'm not a hundred percent sure about that. So I'd rather say that tonight than creating misconception.
I guess I was just looking at, it's more clarify, I think, two things. So it'd be, I guess, is it going to, is there like a does not meet? Or do you just kind of, is each teacher going to have to write up something? Or is there like a does not meet, meets exceeds kind of thing?
Yeah, so it would be a rating scale. Right now, the tentative rating scale that we've decided on would be one, two, three, or four. Four would be the highest, and exceeding the standard. And within those descriptors, there would be a key on the report card. Within the descriptors, you'd see the difference. So a student would be exceeding at a four. Yet a three means they're just meeting that. And there would be language within the ratings for a one and a two that would, that would talk about a student who's receiving a significant amount of work to meet that standard. And making sure that's represented in the key as well.
And I think this is, I think this is, the standard's going to be the same for the entire year. So this is, just, I just want to clarify. The first report card of the year, and by the way, this would go into effect the 2020, 21 school year?
Yeah, we'd be ready to open next year.
Like, so that first report card, like a year from today, tomorrow, whatever, as far as Woodsdale goes, it would be the same. So seeing does not meet would almost, not, I don't want to say expected is the wrong word, but not cause for alarm.
Yeah, absolutely. That would be a big portion of our parent information, making sure that that's really clear that ultimately those standards represent a close-of-year standard. Or maybe not a close-of-year standard, but maybe an area which is delivered within the curriculum at that point, rating how they stand.
Okay.
And it would be more progressive towards the standards as a lot of students will be progressing towards those standards most of the year. Some will meet them earlier on.
Right.
And some specifically math standards may just be one term or one trimester because it's a skill that they're working on, just that geometry, for instance.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a couple things. Made me think about the parent night. We used to say that a four was not an A in our transition out of like letter grades. But are we doing letter grades now at the elementary? Maybe I should know this.
It's a combination. So when the report cards come out tomorrow and when it's got a student grade, a grade three or four, you'd see some fours, threes, twos, and ones within the descriptors. But then there's an overall grade for that.
And in the new report card, it's not the translation from like, and I know we did the, I'm just speaking like from experience, but we did this repeatedly. And it was very hard for families to understand that the four is not the A. And the three, so that's just, and I only just put that out there just because if anyone at home watches this and plays back and remembers, you know, as we move, that is, it's just going to take a while for us to process what that means.
That's our angle with ours.
Yeah, sorry. We talked about that, if we have enough space on the report card, putting a description of the descriptor on the report card. But at the very least, sending home a one-pager with a description of the descriptors for parents to have a better understanding on top of the parent information night. Because the four would really be exceeding the standard and it would be consistently and independently, which is basically working at about grade level, at a consistent and independent.
I was just going to say, yeah, some districts, especially the ones that I've been in, a four would mean you're seeking out of grade level material constantly and bringing it down into the grade level that you're working in. I mean, when I started to put it into that framework, it, it really made me understand like, wow, for a four, for a child to get a four, am I doing that? Am I seeking grade level material consistently from out of grade level because they're, you're, I'm recording that they're exceeding the grade level expectation for the end of the school year? So it's just, just I wanted to mention that. But then the other quick question I have is, so are report cards at the elementary level currently are three times a year, right? Do we get, I sound, do progress reports come home with, okay, how often does that happen?
Midpoint of each trimester.
Okay. So I have a question about that. Is that being looked at in this revision? Like, are you keeping the progress reports?
We haven't really talked about the specific format of the progress report. We would need some point of like midpoint check-in, but.
I want to ask that we think about the progress. So they drive me crazy. I'm going to tell you for two reasons. One, the teacher hat that I wear during the day, I'm wondering, is the time that teachers are spending to do the progress reports worthwhile? And I ask that because when I put my parent hat on, what I'm opening up in a progress report is very generic. It's, I don't, I don't, I've never opened one and felt like, oh, I'm so glad I got that progress report because I really understand the child's progress. Like, it's, there's, there's generic comments. And the middle school, it makes more, now as I have, my oldest is in middle school, that correlation I can understand because they have like averages. So you kind of know, like, the progress report indicates their progress in relation to like the work they've been doing. So that's just a lot of recording out for teachers. It's three times a year. And then an additional three times a year between the trimesters, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. Has there been any feedback from teachers about if they feel like that's a lot of reporting?
They do feel like it's a lot of reporting. We've also talked about the districts that have gone to a standards-based format and how they've chosen to do progress reporting and some of it, some districts have done need-to-know basis. So when there is a student who's consistently struggling, at that point during the progress reporting time, they've reached out. Their conference is also aligned with progress reporting instead of final report card reporting. And some districts have just done and itemized by subject level. And there's some, you know, opportunities to just say like, not currently on track to make the progress that's necessary. And some have just removed it altogether. I believe the Maryland Public Schools is doing that.
I've never had any progress reports I've had to do at the elementary level. So I, I'm just wondering, part of me feels like I'm a report card snob and this is so long overdue, so long. So like when this, I'm adding to, no offense, adding to, but like when that comes home, I kind of just put it over here because it says understands concepts. And I'm like, sounds good, right? And then progress report, sounds good. So I think that as we're finally taking time to really do this right, that just another piece to this puzzle will be to like think in a, it would, it would stink to have us have these report cards that make so much sense and that match the standards and that are very clear for parents to open up and say, oh, okay, I know exactly how they're doing on math facts. Or, you know, that's a bad example, but you know, you know what I mean? That then the, I just think we have to think about the progress reports in addition to, because right now they match, our report cards and progress reports match in that they're generic and don't offer all that information at the elementary level. So if we're going to vamp the report cards, I guess the next piece would just be, when are we going to make some decisions around whether the progress reports are worth the time it's taking, A, the teachers to do them, and in what other ways can we look at that? Those are my thoughts.
Jonathan, Julie, thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
I should probably, I want to thank you for the presentation, but mention also that Sheri Fedorowitz and Matt McCurton have been working on this with the group. But they're not, again, they're not rolling out till later at the middle school. So you guys were nice to be the first victims.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Up next, unfinished business. This was me. So update on Town Manager Search. So the end of last year, I was chosen as a school committee rep on the Town Manager Search Committee. So I can tell you that as of right now, we've sent the posting, I'm going to call it, to Mass Municipal Association's website. They have a, I might get some of this wrong. Mr. Shaver, please correct me. The Beacon, I think, is like a monthly newsletter that comes out through them.
Like trade public.
Yeah, so there are already some applications coming in. It's, the period as of right now is open until 5:00 PM on December 31st. At that point, we're going to collect them all. We'll have meetings in January to see what we have. And then we'll, much like the committees we bent on to hire principals, we'll review resumes, invite candidates into, for interviews that are currently set up for the second half of January. And the goal as of right now is to send to the Board of Selectmen the candidates we feel comfortable with giving to, because they, they're the ones, they do the hiring, the ultimate hiring. We're going to present them with the candidates that we'd be okay with. And then, so our goal is by the end of January or beginning of February, to present them with those candidates. And then, I couldn't tell you what their timeline is. I do know after going through this that Rick LaFon's separation agreement expires April 30th. So that would be his last day. In the packet, there's a brochure that we put together that is, I don't, I think it might be available at MMA site, but I know there's hard copies that if they're not already, will be available at Town Hall. We took a lot of the stuff that was used the last time. A lot hasn't changed, updated, resident numbers with new census information that we had, things like that. So there's just information, I don't know if you guys have any questions on it? If anybody has any questions, I can answer. That's the bulk. That our next meeting is Monday night. Trying to do every other until the holidays, every other Monday at Town Hall.
So you've already met?
The search committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, a bunch of times.
So did they, didn't they just add someone last night?
So they just added, so one of the members who was chose, so there's seven members. Board of Selectmen chose a represent, I'm sorry. The school committee chose a representative, myself. The finance committee chose a representative, and then five residents based on, they felt that, the Board of Selectmen chose the five residents. One of them became ill. He was no longer able to serve out the term. So last night, they added somebody to replace him to give us back to seven. Rick Collins, who I think you all know, was chosen as the person to replace. So he'll be joining the committee at our next meeting on Monday. He was sent all the emails to catch up to speed today. So that's kind of what I have. Rich Smith, I believe is a firefighter. He's the chair of this Town Manager Search Committee. So if you're not a firefighter here, he's a firefighter somewhere. I know that, so. That is what I have. I don't know if there's any other questions the committee has. I'll keep you posted as we get closer. By the time that we have our next meeting, we'll probably have, all the candidates will be in. We might not have met yet to discuss them. And some of it will be in executive session, so I can only share so much up to a certain point. I'll keep you posted as I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Report of the subcommittees, social emotional learning, Jackie, Lisa.
Yes, we have lots of good information to share. Okay, I think we'll start with, there's going to be some changes to how we learn about the stages of puberty in grades five and six. And it's the same talks, I guess, that happen every year for fifth and sixth grade. However, we're going to have them be a little more inclusive. Kate Casey has done some amazing work that sort of make us match what other districts have, the move that other districts have made with some more inclusive practices around human growth and development classes. And just to highlight some of those, students in grades five and six typically learn about their bodies and the process separately as boys and girls. And so in this way that we're going to sort of put them together, and I'll talk about the opt-out part in a minute, but there's a line here, do the audience have this?
We're ready when you guys are.
We have a copy for you guys to look at too, but for those at home here, there's just sort of these five, actually, and we just moved mine. So could I have the updated one? I'm looking at the one from our, thank you. There we go. So if you look at number one, for example, I think that one really highlights the why are we doing this? Why are we making the changes? "By teaching students of all genders alongside one another about healthy sexuality and relationships, including consent, we provide students a set of social expectations to hold in common. The more students are aware of what their peers have been taught about how to treat others, the more they can hold one another accountable." "We're trying to eliminate that sense of secrecy and shame around, the boys learn one set of information and the girls learn another set of information. Instead, they'll learn alongside each other what it is that they need to know, learning about parts that both parties have." Let's see. There will be letters coming home. I'm jumping. So you want to go?
There'll be letters coming home. We're going to send them out the end of January. And they're going to ask them to be returned sometime in February. The exact dates aren't a hundred percent yet. But it's just, it's an opt-out letter that if parents decide they don't want their children to participate in the program, they can opt out of it. If they don't send an opt-out, then they'll be included. This is how it's always been done. The only difference really is sixth grade, and I can speak because my daughter, we talked about this in our subcommittee meeting. Like, as a parent of a sixth grader, she was a fifth grader and her and your son and his peers last year learned in separate spaces. So the boys learned information that was relevant to them and the girls, and then there's the common information that they both get. So this year, as sixth graders, they'll be learning co-ed about the process of human growth and development. So it felt like where there was usually only the opt-out letter for the fifth graders because it related to the video and sometimes the age of them, you know, there was parent concern. This, we felt like the sixth grade needed this updated opt-out just because of that change from fifth to sixth.
Which would probably only be for this year because then next year, they won't need the opt-out in sixth grade because it'll be the fifth graders that are coming up. So they've already been taught together.
Is there an alternative if they opt out? Like, I don't know.
Then they, the alternative, I guess, would be conversations at home, like with your families. You know, do you handle it the way that you feel is best to talk about that information at home? Do you guys have any questions about this part? Because I just want to touch on as a part of our update, that hidden curriculum piece in grade five, the transitions. I think that's important to mention too. So I don't know if anyone has questions.
I just feel like we should have received this a lot sooner. I'm kind of taken back by this, be quite honest with you. I just, like, some of the things in here, I mean, I, I think that, I mean, are we looking at the girls in here and, you know?
It's all the same information they're being taught, but they're being taught together and separated into a room of boys.
Some of the girls will feel embarrassed in, you know, sitting next to a boy talking about, you know, what they're, what they're going through for the first time in their lives, most of them.
Everybody's embarrassed every year, every time because it's the first time they, they talk about it. And, you know, the discussions, I think a million years ago taught this. The discussions start, you know, with a lot of giggling and a lot of embarrassment. And then once you get past that, you get into, you know, a basic and thoughtful, better understandings of the human body. But one of the reasons to mix the groups is so that it's not so stigmatizing and, or private. Not that these topics aren't private, but if we, if we make them shameful, then when our kids.
I don't think it's shameful. That's not the word.
But that's, but that's what, but that's what the kids can internalize this as. And in doing that, when you reach an age where there's, you know, sexual harassment or abuse or assault, they're less apt to support each other with those challenges. They're less apt to feel comfortable talking about it. So if, if the, if the young gentlemen know what, have the same information that the, that the young ladies have about the human body, it lends itself better developmentally to those appropriate conversations.
The other piece to this that is in bullet number five here is that the, like, I know I just participated in a training through DESI when I was in the Hanover Public Schools where they had someone come out and educate us educators on issues that affect students who are transgender, or who don't identify with a particular gender. And so, that was sort of like, that's, that's something that we're all still learning about. And there are students in our schools who don't, who were born with male parts, but identify as a female and vice versa. So, one of the reasons why so many districts have already made this change, this document you're looking at was adopted, or adapted, rather, from the Boston Public Schools Wellness Department, is because it's more inclusive in that for the students who are struggling with gender identity, they don't have to choose the room, which room to go into. They just get the information alongside their grade-level peers. And so, I guess it's just sensitivity to that is part of the, is part of the thinking too, and why the state's sort of making sure that we're being inclusive and mindful. And I don't know if Abington has had any type of training yet in regards to what DESI has put out. It was sort of like, I sat in that training, like, I got information that I felt like I was relearning so much of what I had learned in my own growth and development classes, just, there were things that I didn't know that made, sort of opened my eyes. So, that when this was presented as a topic in the subcommittee on social emotional health, I thought, oh, this is also part of why we're making this move, because there's all this other work that's being done relative to how do we really look at our traditional schooling and make sure that we're being mindful of the ways in which the world has sort of changed, I guess.
And I think, I mean, I think it's, I think I already, I mean, I probably know, this isn't a change that the committee would need to approve as a whole, okay? Thank you.
We're not changing the curriculum, we're changing that they're gonna be in the same room together, basically.
And it's delivered over the course of five, five to six weeks, like, that they, they learn. I guess the videos will no longer be shown, it's gonna be a discussion topic base.
The resources are changing, because the quote-unquote movie won't be used.
And then, again, like, for anyone who feels strongly that this is not the approach they want for their child to experience how they receive this information, there's a letter that will be going home to families in fifth and sixth grade, where you can read it. Here it is. And it bullets the topics that will be discussed, so just to highlight, does he know which grade which? So, like, fifth grade, it'll say that the students will identify the anatomy of a person who's assigned as female at birth, identify the anatomy of a person who's assigned as male, understand the physical, social, emotional changes that occur during puberty, and ignore, acknowledge those changes as a normal part of growth and development, hygiene, understanding the menstrual cycle, these are, these are just content that was always taught. But if anyone's uncomfortable, there is a letter that you can choose to opt your child out and just do that education at home. I was just gonna touch on one, as the social emotional subcommittees worked on, some pieces that I know we'll talk about in the future, but this just because I know we don't meet again till January, right? I think, I just wanna give credit to the middle school for some of the work that they've done related to transitions. We've talked about this year before, for the fifth graders, so fourth graders coming into fifth grade and being in a new building, and how do they, what's all that hidden curriculum, like, what if, what do I do if my locker gets stuck? How do I find a seat in the cafeteria? We talked a little bit about how do we make that transition more comfortable, and that middle school, the work of the school psychologists?
Adjustment.
Adjustment.
Yeah, do I not, Mr. Robbins, do you wanna tell us a, I just, I'm really proud of that work, and I just wanted to highlight it for a few.
James, can you go to the mic for us? Thanks.
You didn't have a knee replacement.
So, the school adjustment counselor and school psychol, uh, one of the school psychologists, Leah Rudden, school adjustment counselor, being Rebecca Salin. Made sure to meet with all fifth grade students shortly after the school year started to, Jackie put it nicely, address the hidden curriculum in the, in the transition. So, they, so what they did is they talked about the differences in schools, like, all right, what is, what is, you know, physically different between Woodsdale and the middle school? They talked about the experience of stress and anxiety, what that looks like, how to, how to go about your life to try to minimize that, and when it becomes too much, who to, who to seek. They talked about friendship and relationship issues, like, some of your best friends are now gonna be in different classes, and you're not gonna see very often. How do you manage that? Or, when you have someone you're really close to, and they start to change, and you don't have much in common, how can you still be respectful of that person, but recognize that you're growing apart? And then, in addition to that, they also just dealt with nuts and bolts productivity issues, like how to stay organized, how to, who to go to for help, and things like, you know, how to take care of your locker and stuff like that. So, it was just sort of the middle school's way of getting these new fifth graders up and running. And the adjustment counselor in schools, like, may take on other issues, you know, as we get input, say, through the committee and things like that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
Moving on, report of the superintendent of schools.
So, you have in your packet the legal portion, the letter, thank you, that the chair would be asked to sign pending your approval. We spoke about this at the last executive session. The administrative assistants felt that the way that the hourly rate that was currently being calculated was not equitable enough for their group. And so, they asked for a recalculation of that rate. There's a spreadsheet that we talked about, that the committee is also included in this letter that describes what I'm, what I'm talking about. And it provides those changes to the collective bargaining agreement based on a recalculation of the hourly rate to 260 days annually. No, not 260. That's the max for two.
It equalizes the pay among all of the administrative assistants' hourly rates, regardless of how many days a year they work.
Based on 200 and?
Based on the highest hourly rate of each in, of...
Yeah, whichever was the most.
Whichever was the most.
And this is what we discussed in the executive session last week, so. I'll be looking for a motion to approve the change in the hourly rate based on the agreement in the agenda and what we discussed in the executive session last month.
Make a motion.
I'll second. Call in favor? So, that is all said.
Effective January.
Okay. I will take the next thing. So, next up is the superintendent's evaluation, year-end evaluation for 2019. I think the committee's familiar with how I put this together. I'm not going to go through the packet of all of the goals, I'm gonna stick to the summary that I put together. And I'm not gonna read everything, everybody, this isn't everybody's agenda, so anybody can read whatever they want on it. But I'll let you know how, our total anyway, what our total rating was, and then just a couple of the comments. The first goal, student learning goal, promote student engagement in the classroom by increasing the capacity of teachers in student-centered pedag, I'm gonna get this word wrong, pedagogical practices that serve all students to improve academic achievement. Out of the five of us, there was four ratings of proficient and one needing further action. Some of the comments, encouraged by teacher strategy, sharing building-wide, sometimes the best way to learn is from a peer. I do not think enough has been done to create the best possible rotating schedule for Abington High School. The one that was put forward does not do enough, and my hopes and expectations are that something that will go into place for the 2020, 2021 school year. This school encompasses many anticipated activities that are ongoing and important to continue to focus on. For example, the pilot of the bridge block is underway. Learning walks to share successful strategies among teachers continue, and professional development to ensure that all staff are consistent with practices is ongoing. Consider non-threatening professional conversations at the admin level, at the admin team level regarding values and challenging each other to grow and push one another in the best interest of the greater goal of the district alignment, clarity of purpose. Children deserve similar experiences, culture, each build, building to building throughout our district. I do wanna add too, that every comment was in, is in here that I received, so. Goal two, the district improvement goal, strategically increase the social emotional supports, materials, and activities for our students in order to improve their wellness, resiliency, interpersonal skills, and overall success as individuals. There were four ratings of proficient and one exemplary. Partnering with CPAC has brought in great speakers this year, look to find a way to involve more staff at these as they're free to them and very beneficial. The kickoff to the school year was a powerful presentation and exemplified how important SEL is in our district. Opening the school year with a focus on the whole child really set the tone for the vision and the work in the year ahead. Follow-up with Jessica Minian for professional development was a nice opportunity to revisit the important focus of our work. Since SEL became a focal point in schools a couple of years ago, Mr. Schaefer has been a constant advocate of social and emotional learning. He, our administrators, and staff have done an excellent job in supporting students and providing help to students and families. And the last goal, the professional practice goal, improve district and school lines of communication and transparency of expectations, policies, protocols, successes, and challenges. There were four ratings of proficient and one exemplary. Mr. Schaefer, as well as administration under his direction, have been extremely proficient in relaying sensitive information and communication properly to parents and students when appropriate. Added focus going forward on school partnership with Abington CAM after changes that have occurred there. Your continued presence at school events in all schools is valued and never unnoticed. This demonstrates the importance of the students, families, and staff, and also allows the opportunity for interactions. That is where I'm going to stop the reading part. I'm gonna ask the committee if there's anything they'd like to add before I ask Mr. Schaefer, is there anything we would like to talk about? Anything? No? Mr. Schaefer, would you?
So, I just wanted to thank everybody for their feedback, the positives and the constructive pieces that I need to focus on so that we can continue in these efforts. These goals are, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a district team of people from our, our, you know, cafeteria, bus, paraprofessional teachers. There isn't, I haven't taught one lesson to our kids in this last year. It's, it's the people I'm fortunate enough to work with that should get praise and credit, and yet, there's so much more work for all of us to do for kids, and it's just, I don't personally feel we'll ever get to perfection, because it's something that you always strive for, and kids deserve nothing less than that effort every single day. So, that leads to my next piece, and that is, I'm really, I'm gonna be looking, if it's, if you could, for, for information from you on my next set of goals. These are, the work here isn't done with these. So, in terms of focusing that work that we continue with, with a lot of these, or other things that we need to take on over this next four weeks or so, I would, you know, I would, the system would, the children would benefit from, from that input from, from this group. So, I look, you know, I look to you for that, if I could, if I could get that from you, when you're able, as you're interested.
And the idea would be, you'd present your, would present your goals at the next meeting we have in the beginning of January?
I would, I would shoot for that, however, if the committee would be okay, that's, that's my goal. But if that's not the best time to do it, if you'd allow the end of January meeting, if that makes more sense, because of input, because of diligence, not because of any other reason. And regardless of when those goals are approved, we're still gonna be working on these goals. The work doesn't ever stop, as everybody knows, it's pretty obvious.
The one thing I'd just add, and Mr. Schaefer and I have had these conversations, like, on the side, but I think it's important to say it here too. You haven't taught any lessons, but you have, and I speak for myself when I say, like, I've, I've challenged you, the district. When I say you, I mean the district, over the years, as a parent, before I was a school committee member. I continue to challenge the district as a school committee member. And you have never come to me or to us and said that, that you can't or that you won't. And, and sometimes I wonder how, how you will. But yet, you, you find, you find a way to sort of rally your people. And so, I know that I'm often hard on you and this district, because I care and I love our kids, and I know you know that. But I, I don't think that you get, you often deflect the credit to others, because you're a good man. But I think that it's important to recognize that under your leadership, there's been a lot of change in a short amount of time. More change than I probably expected there to be, and had faith that there could be. And I'm just, like, deeply, I'm deeply appreciative of that. So, thank you.
Thank you, sincerely thank you. Our, our kids deserve no less than all of us challenging and pushing for the best. So, I appreciate the challenge, and I appreciate your kind words.
Great. Anybody else? Report of the assistant superintendent for Business and Finance, Dr. Michella.
Thank you.
You got this.
Yeah. I was supposed to connect the dark background.
Oh, okay.
I wanna make sure everyone has this. I was supposed to put that. So, I have my one item, and then I have another update. Each time, each year around this time, I ask the committee to vote the salary and expense account allocation for the, for this school year's budget. We've done our hiring, everything is pretty settled. We know our, where we stand staff-wise and special education-wise at this point in the year, those things still change. So, that's why you don't get this at the very beginning of the year, because things are still kind of sorting themselves out. So, if you would be so kind as to approve the allocations for the FY '20 school year. Salary account, eighteen million, two hundred forty-three thousand, three hundred eighty-seven dollars. And expense account, five million, five hundred seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred fifty-one dollars.
And just to clarify for everybody, this, that total is our operating budget, there's no change to the operating budget.
Correct. Thank you.
Yep. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve? I'll make the motion to approve the allocation.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I also wanna give you a school building update. Over the last few weeks, you may have noticed some roadwork happening around the building. The site contractor, Quigley Brothers, was here rebuilding some of our drainage systems that hadn't, hadn't worked as designed. So, they were out here repairing those. They also, we've also had some conversations about when you drive over some manhole covers, it sounded really loud, and so, they were able to rebuild two of those around the site as well. We, I, I know that I've spoken to you in the past about the reclaimed water system as something that we continue to, it's not, it has not worked as designed. And through trying to figure out why, we've also uncovered some other drainage systems that weren't designed, or aren't, they're not working as designed or not designed appropriately. So, we actually had a significant meeting this afternoon with the contractor, the site contractor, site engineers. And on Tuesday, we'll see a cadre of people out here doing surveying and measurements, and trying to determine what's going on with some drainage, it's actually near the tennis courts. And we also have issues with tennis court cracking, so they may or may not be tied together. But I did wanna give you the update, that it is something that we have not given up on, and we are absolutely investigating and pushing very hard, and holding people, contractors accountable for parts of the drainage system that aren't working as designed. Two other areas that they'll also be looking at is the front bus loop. Day or two after rain, we're still seeing water coming off that front field towards the building, towards the drainage systems closer to the building. At the pre-K, where it crosses, there's a speed bump, and water collects there, and out by the back tennis courts as well. So, they'll be looking at those also next week. We also, you may have noticed in the cafeteria, there's some ceiling clouds that have been taken down by the contractor. They were beginning to delaminate, and one has been sent back to the manufacturer. We were safe, we wanted to be safe, better safe than sorry, and we took down all of those that were of that same type. Although, there, there wasn't a sense that they were gonna fail necessarily, but... Um, although there, there wasn't a sense that they were gonna fail necessarily, but we took them all, we had them all taken down and, uh, they've been sent back to the manufacturer to determine why they're deli- delaminating and to come up with a plan, um, whether it's the same product or a different product to be replaced.
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Michelle. Um, new business and establishing of next school committee meeting dates. So our next meeting will be Tuesday, January seventh, two thousand twenty, at seven PM here in the library. Um, on that day, there'll also be a preliminary fiscal year two thousand twenty-one budget hearing that'll take place at seven thirty. Um, and then in addition, we'll have another meeting in January on Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, um, which will be a regular monthly meeting. Um, a couple of informational items, I took them out of order for a second. So there's a letter to, um, town manager Rick Lefon regarding the vacant lot that we talked about at last month's meeting, so that was sent to him. And there's also a, a memo to the planning board regarding the, um, property behind Woodsdale that we talked about. Um, the other thing, I wanna congratulate the new inductees into the National Arms Society. I'm not gonna read every, but the pamphlet is in here, so congratulations to all of them. As well as congratulations to the, um, class of two thousand twenty, John Abigail Adams Scholarship recipients. Um, uh, congratulations to Colby Augusta, Lisa Song for being one of them, Cam Kearney, who is not here tonight, but our student rep also. Um, and everybody who is, who received one, um, I just wanna wish, congratulations to them. Um, some dates to remember, um, tomorrow, Wednesday, November twenty-seventh is a half-day that'll start Thanksgiving break through the weekend. Uh, Wednesday, December fourth, Greenway Boosters meeting at seven PM here at the high school. Tuesday, December tenth is an in-service early release day. Wednesday, December eleventh, um, there is both an AEF meeting at Town Hall at seven PM and the high school holiday concert takes place here in the auditorium at seven. Uh, Friday, December thirteenth, Abington Community Band and Chorus Holiday Concert in the auditorium. Friday, December thirteenth as well, the, um, Abington High School Junior Class Auction in the cafeteria. Monday, December sixteenth, grade five and six holiday concert at seven PM. Wednesday, the eighteenth, seven and eights, holiday concert in the auditorium. Um, the schools will be closed for vacation break Monday, December twenty-third through Wednesday, January first, reopening on Thursday. And then as I mentioned, our next meeting is Tuesday, January seventh. Before I get to the next thing, um, so as I mentioned, this will be our last meeting before any of the holidays. So happy Thanksgiving in a couple of days to everybody, um, happy holidays to you as well, as we will be meeting again until January. Um, to the community, the committee, parents, thank you, administration and staff, please pass that along. And, um, before we make a motion during executive session, I wanna wish the football team good luck in the Super Bowl. Uh, Saturday, December seventh at nine AM at Gillette Stadium, if you can make it, make it there to support them. So next, I'll be looking for a roll call vote to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing unit B job descriptions and not to return to public session.
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. Good night.